I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the Commissioner meeting of September 23rd, 2021 at 6:00 PM. Sussex County Community College Performing Arts Center in Newton, New Jersey. Terry, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Carney.
Here.
Director Fantasia.
Here.
Commissioner Fasano.
Here.
Commissioner Patillo.
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley.
Here.
I'll ask that you all please join me in a moment of silence and salute to the flag. Tonight, again, we've noticed some really, really severe weather flash flood warnings here in our corner of the state, and many of us were surprised at the hurricane, and we did have some fatalities due to flash flooding and drowning. So let's just keep in mind those people who lost their lives, and let's just pray for the safety of everyone. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Number four is the public statement pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975. Adequate notices defined by Section 3D of Chapter 231, PL 1975 has been made by regular mail and email, such notice being submitted on September 15th, 2021, in the administrative center of the County of Sussex located at One Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey, to the following: New Jersey Herald, Star Ledger, WSUS Radio, NWNNJ Radio, and is also posted on the bulletin board maintained in the administrative center for public announcements, and has been submitted to the Sussex County Clerk in compliance with said act. At this time, I ask that you please all mute your devices. Number five is the approval of the agenda. I need a motion to approve the agenda. Somu, second?
Second.
Discussion? I'd like to note that Resolution 13A regarding authorization to provide for the purchase of CityWorks Asset Management software and Resolution 13F regarding medical marijuana are still under legal review and therefore will not be considered this evening. I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Somu.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Pass. Number six, proclamations, certificates, and presentations. I need a motion to adopt the proclamations and certificates. Somu.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so the first proclamation is recognizing October 6th, 2021, as Knockout Opiate Abuse Day, excepting is Christine Florio and Maureen Cianci.
Cianci.
Cianci from the Department of Health and Human Services.
I think Maureen's here.
I see Christine here. Hi Christine. Deputy Director Fasano will present.
If you'd like to join me up there. Okay, well, thank you Christine for being here, and I'd like to read this proclamation into the record first. It states, "Whereas New Jersey is in the midst of a life-threatening opioid abuse epidemic, and whereas the Partnership for a Drug-Free New Jersey has designated October 6th, 2021 as Knockout Opiate Abuse Day, an initiative with a dual purpose: to educate families of the addictive qualities of opioid pain medicines and their link to heroin abuse rates in New Jersey, and to outreach physicians with safer prescribing messages found in the Center of Disease Control for Prevention Guidelines for prescribing opioids, which include considering other therapies, setting realistic treatment goals with patients, and discussing with the patients the pros and cons of opioids. And whereas the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners supports initiatives designed to raise awareness about opioid abuse in New Jersey and take steps to prevent addiction. Now therefore be it resolved and be it proclaimed that the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners has recognized October 6th, 2021, as Knockout Opiate Abuse Day in the County of Sussex by the order of the Board of County Commissioners, Dawn Fantasia, Commissioner Director, myself as Deputy Commissioner, Sylvia Patillo, Herb Yardley, and Chris Carney as Commissioners." With that Christine, would you like to say anything?
Yes, thank you. Am I allowed to pull this out?
Absolutely.
Okay. I just want to thank the Board of Commissioners for their support. It's been almost two years since we developed the overdose fatality review team, and it has been very successful. So I want to thank you for your support. You know, the overall goal is to try to reduce or prevent any overdose deaths. So it's been very successful. Our partners have been coming to all of our meetings. We were actually the first in the state to go all virtual for our overdose fatality review team meetings. We actually just got an extension going into 2022 for another $100,000. So I just want to thank you, the Board of Commissioners, thank Greg and Carol for all your support, and we're hoping that it will help Sussex County residents who are struggling. So, thank you.
Okay, next we have Recognizing Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Commissioner Patillo will present this proclamation on October 12th, but she'll read it tonight.
Whereas the impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging, directly affecting individuals in Sussex County throughout the United States and the world, and society as a whole; and whereas domestic violence rates are increasing worldwide during COVID-19 pandemic, due to increased isolation with their abusers, the number of domestic violence incidents in the United States increased by 8.1% after lockdown orders. Whereas racism, homophobia, transphobia, ageism, and discrimination based on physical ability, nationality, or other factors help to perpetuate domestic violence and make finding safety even more difficult for some victims; and whereas the need for safe housing continues to be rated as survivors' most urgent need. And whereas Sussex County joins with others across New Jersey and the nation in supporting victims of domestic violence, as well as local programs, state coalitions, national organizations, and other agencies nationwide, who are committed to increasing public awareness of domestic violence and sending a clear message to abusers that domestic violence is not tolerated in Sussex County. And whereas domestic violence impacts millions of people each year, but it can be prevented. Preventing domestic violence requires the collective voice and power of individuals, families, institutions, and systems, each whose contribution is a valuable and powerful component to transforming our communities. Now therefore be it resolved that the Sussex County Board of Commissioners join communities across the country in playing an active role in preventing domestic violence. Along with the United States Government and State of New Jersey, we do hereby proclaim October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month by order of the Board of County Commissioners, Dawn Fantasia, Commissioner Director, Anthony Fasano, Deputy Commissioner, Herbert Yardley, Chris Carney, and myself as Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you Sylvia. And the next is Recognizing Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Again, Maureen is not here this evening. Perhaps Carol, would you like to receive this from the Department of Health and Human Services?
I have to watch all the wires. Thanks for coming up, Mike. Thanks for coming in. Okay. Whereas breast cancer is a serious health threat to women and men across Sussex County, the State of New Jersey, and our nation; and whereas breast cancer is the second-leading cause of cancer death in women, and the risk increases with age; and whereas breast cancer is typically detected either during a screening examination before symptoms have developed, or after symptoms have developed when a woman or man notices a change in their breasts; and whereas screening, early detection, and prompt treatment can significantly reduce the suffering and deaths caused by the disease; and whereas increasing public awareness of this disease, including risk factors and symptoms, will help save the lives of women and men as they learn to recognize the warning signs. And whereas Sussex County Division of Health, Sussex Warren Chronic Disease Coalition, and New Jersey Cancer Education and Early Detection Program collaboratively promotes National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and Susan G. Coman's Tie a Ribbon Campaign throughout the month of October. Now therefore be it resolved that the Sussex County Board of -- it doesn't have the word commissioners -- does hereby recognize the month of October 2021 as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Sussex County by order of the Board of County Commissioners, Dawn Fantasia, Commissioner Director, Anthony Fasano, Deputy Commissioner, Herbert Yardley, Chris Carney, and myself as Commissioners. Thank you very much.
I just wanted to take an opportunity to thank the Commissioners for their support for the Division of Health, and among the very many different kinds of jobs that the Division of Health is responsible for is for education, public health education. Do you want to speak for a minute, Maureen? Thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the Commissioners for recognition of breast cancer awareness. It is in Sussex County, we do have a higher-than-average death rate than the state and the country. The COVID pandemic did not help in our screenings, so, you know, we work out there. We have the NJC, New Jersey Cancer Education Early Detection Grant. We do women's health screening. The Sussex Warren Chronic Disease Coalition helps to promote cancer prevention and early education detection in our community, and it's important to have our county administration support this work that we do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Christine.
I'd like to add something, if I could. I'd like to say, listen, I think the whole Board would like to thank the hard work that you do, as well as all of -- and yourself as a nurse, all of the nurses at the county. I think without your support, your work, and your heart that's in these programs, they wouldn't work, and people wouldn't come to them. And I just want to let you know that all of us up here appreciate the work you're doing, and please let the staff know that. We really appreciate what they're doing.
Thanks Herb. We appreciate your recognition. And we do, we have a wonderful staff in public health, nursing, dedicated, caring, professional, and we work really hard, in spite of, you know, the ongoing public health situation, to keep our community healthy and to prevent chronic disease and illness and cancer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we are recognizing October as Sussex County Arts and Heritage Month. Is anyone here to accept that? There was no representative from the Arts and Heritage Council? Okay. I am the liaison to the Arts and Heritage Council, so I'd like to read the proclamation. Whereas Sussex County is comprised of 500 square miles, 24 municipalities, 150,000 residents, maybe a little less at this moment, but we hope to be growing, and hundreds of businesses; and whereas Sussex County is blessed with the beauty of its natural landscapes, its bucolic farms, historic sites, and villages that make it a great place to live and to visit; and whereas the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners deem the Sussex County lifestyle and the fabric of its community as worthy of celebration; and whereas the Sussex County Arts and Heritage Council plan to sponsor the 11th Annual Heritage Tour in Sussex County in celebration of the many historical sites in the county; and whereas the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners and the Sussex County Arts and Heritage Council encourage both state and county residents to visit the many historical sites in the county. Now therefore be it resolved by the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners that the month of October be celebrated as Heritage Month in the County of Sussex by order of the Board of County Commissioners, Dawn Fantasia, Commissioner Director, Anthony Fasano, Deputy Director, Sylvia Patillo, Herbert Yardley, and Chris Carney, Commissioners. They're doing great work. We all know how important the arts have been throughout the pandemic, and we know that the gallery has been closed, but that has not stopped them from digital submissions and still trying to maintain the programs that they had started. And again, we are the recipient of, for the next fiscal year, a $200,000 grant from the state, which should definitely elevate our arts offerings. Hopefully, they'll be bringing on an executive director like I discussed at the last meeting, so we wish them well, and we look forward to their heritage events. The next is recognizing the 40th anniversary of Skyland's Ride. Is that Commissioner Carney?
No, we --
That is not --
We already had that celebration this morning.
Ah, you both went this morning. Does anyone want to talk a little bit about that event?
I would, sure.
Okay.
Yeah. We had the opportunity to be with our Skyland's Ride group. We had the drivers, the office workers there, our mechanics there, public health was there, Christine was there, and of course Carol was the spokesperson for the event. It was their 40th anniversary, and we talked about what you can accomplish in 40 years. And in 40 years, what they accomplished was the trust of the community, and they became a lifeline for people who need that service. And I spoke about a phone call that I had received from one of their riders, and she first said that, you know, she was usually calling to complain, but this time she was calling to show her appreciation. And she talked about the dedication and the kindness and compassion that our drivers have, and how she appreciated, even when she made calls to the office, how courteous they were to her, and of course, the mechanics who you don't see, but who took the time to fix those buses and keep them on the road. But she made a statement. If you give me a minute, I have her statement. She said, "They didn't turn their back and leave me stranded during the pandemic. They risked their own lives to make sure that my life was not interrupted." That's when she raised her voice on the phone, and she shouted, "My hats off to Skyland Ride, especially this past year, because they didn't forget the little people like so many do. They did their job, and they did it well, and I really want them to know how much I appreciate them." And coming from a Commissioner and saying, you know, complimentary things is one thing, but coming from a rider who is often calling to, you know, complain about something is something different, to hear an accolade from them. And I think what happened, and it might have happened to many of them, is during the pandemic, they didn't know if these rides were going to continue. And so there was a fear in them that they were going to be left, but they weren't. These drivers came every single time that they were needed. They were out there with their buses, driving them wherever they needed to go so that they could get everything done and go to doctors, or whatever they had to do. And like she said, their lives were not interrupted. And she was so grateful because she realized what it would be like if she didn't have that service. And I think a lot of people were worried about that. What would these people do? These are a vulnerable group of people, many disableds that can't get around on their own. Without that service, they can't buy food, they can't get to appointments. It's a life-saving service to most of them. And we were just thanking everybody that for 40 years, they've been dedicated and just did a stellar job in building that service and making it what it is today. And it's the same, and Herb, I'm just going to go on a little bit more. Herb hit it right on the head there with all of our services. When you talk about public health and that, all that they do, all the prevention work that they do, all the education that they do, and if you've ever gone to any of our clinics, they are the sweetest group of people I have ever met. Because they're secluded up there in Hardeston, we often don't get to see them, but when you go and visit them, they're so welcoming that somebody came up to see them. But truthfully, our public health staff is just absolutely amazing. And then I'm just going to compliment Christine because our drug and alcohol group, she works with a community youth group, they do so much more than you could ever imagine. You do not see what they do in preparation, in caring, and worrying. When it came to our overdose fatality -- what is it? Overdose fatality? I always forget the other's one. Just give me a minute. The fatality review team, I actually went down with them because there were two pilot programs in New Jersey that were funded, and they took me down with them, and I watched how this team worked. You had the medical examiner, you had the hospital, you had the sheriff, you had the police, the prosecutor, you had all of these people associated with a person who had died of an overdose. And they review all of the history, and they watch where they went. They went for counseling here, then they went to the hospital for here, and then they did this here, and then a program over here. And you look to see where there is a weakness in our services, in our services that are partnerships, and where did we drop them, so that that doesn't happen again. It took a long time, but Nick Luizzi and his staff created that right here in Sussex County. And it doesn't cost us anything. Everybody that comes is a volunteer, and for every time they come, it's like at least three hours worth of their time. It takes a long time to do these types of reviews because they're very, very thorough. And they didn't have to bring that here. The other counties don't have it, but they did. And it's really important to our work as a county in making sure that our services are not just available, but that they can move through the services from one to the other, and build on services from all the partnerships that we have, so that they get the help that they need, and they don't fall through the cracks. And I was very proud that you were able to bring this here in all that you do. And Carol, I just want to thank you too, while you're sitting here, because you do so much. I can't even begin to thank you for all the things that you accomplish in the course of one day. It's amazing. And of course, we have Greg also, who's our tip of our spear over there that leads us through. But I'm always proud to talk about our staff, all of our staff, because they're absolutely amazing people, and that's what makes Sussex County so special. It is not a job to them. They would never put the hours in and go to all the extras things that they go to if it was a job. It is not a job. It's a ministry, and it's personal. And it's personal because they build community. So I just want to thank all of our staff for all that they do that we don't even know that they do, and all that they accomplish just in the course of a day. So thank you.
Thank you Sylvia. I'm not sure if the Commissioners had a chance to review the voicemail that Terry had shared. It was a rider from Skyland's Ride who called to leave a beautiful message complimenting the new bus that they were able to ride on. They said it was clean, and it was spacious, and it was lovely, and again, very grateful for the service, very grateful for the drivers and the transportation. And this lady, you could hear it in her voice, she was just absolutely glowing, and she just wanted us to know that. That was one of the nicest messages, I think, that we've heard, because, you know, we make these decisions, we make these purchases, we think, you know, these are the things that we need in the county, but when you actually get that kind of feedback from the end user, it's really nice. So next, we do have recognizing Eagle Scout rank for Nathan Benjamin Brotman, but Commissioner Carney will be actually attending that Court of Honor ceremony.
October 3rd.
October 3rd. Thank you. And last, we have a proclamation recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month. Now, Hispanic Heritage Month is a bit of an outlier because it straddles two months, actually. It actually begins September 15th and runs through October 15th. So it's a mid-month to mid-month, but we decided to actually recognize that today. So Commissioner Yardley?
Thank you Dawn. Having some Hispanic members in my family, I find this -- I'm glad to read this. Thank you. Whereas this proclamation is presented in recognition of Hispanic Heritage Month to celebrate the histories, cultures, and contributions of American citizens whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America, and whereas Hispanic Heritage Month was started in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Lyndon Baines Johnson. It was expanded by President Ronald Reagan in 1988 to cover a 30-day period starting on September 15th and ending on October 15th. This period of time celebrates the anniversary of independence for Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua, Mexico, and Chile, and includes Columbus Day, or Dia de la Raza. And whereas over the years, partnerships developed between businesses, education, and governmental organizations to the better understanding of the needs of the Hispanic community. Now therefore be it resolved, the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners joins with the Hispanic community by proclaiming the month beginning September 15th and ending on October 15th as Hispanic Heritage Month by order of the Board of County Commissioners, Dawn Fantasia, Commissioner, Anthony Fasano, Deputy Commissioner, Sylvia Patillo, Herb Yardley, and Chris Carney, Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we are on number seven, public hearings. There are no public hearings this evening. Number eight is public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make a comment of three minutes or less regarding an agenda item. Please line up at the microphone and maintain six feet social distance with other attendees. Please state your name, municipality, and the agenda topic for the record. So I need a motion to open the floor for public comments on agenda items. Somu. Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, the floor is now open for public comments on agenda items. Seeing no one coming forward, I need a motion to close the floor for public comments on agenda items. Somu. Second? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, number nine is Commissioners' comments. We'll begin with Commissioner Carney, please.
Thank you Director. Some county resurfacing program updates. I went over this last meeting, but just to reiterate, Riverview Paving, they got awarded a contract in the amount of $10,773,923.57. That work schedule construction is to be expected to begin on about Tuesday, September 21st, which was two days ago. Milling and paving, County Route 638, Helm Lakes Road, September 21st to the 24th. County Route 515, Vernon-Stockholm Road, September 27th through October 18th. So there's a little bit of a gray area, but you'll see signs, and you'll also see traffic when you get there. Grant Price Road, October 19th to the 22nd, and Drew Road, October 25th or the 26th. That's all night work, they'll start 7:00 PM and be done at 5:30. For you early birds like myself, hopefully you missed that. There's some striping going on, and there's some deferred to the springtime roads that will happen in 2022. County Road 515, Vernon-Stockholm Road, County Road 517, Sparta-Munson Corner, County Route 605, Old Stanhope Road, County Route 607, Maximum Drive, River Sticks Road, County Route 612, Bellwood-Creamery-Middleville Road, County Route 613, Lake Mohawk East Shore Trail, County Route 615, Sandiston-Flapbrook Road, County Route 621, Woodside Ave, and County Route 640, Leighton-Bevins Road. Again, I read this last time, just an update for you there. NJTPA is the board I sit on. Not everything has to do with Sussex County. It is nice when we do get some work here, so there's a couple of things that pertain to us, so I'm just going to read them. At the September 13th NJTPA Board of Trustees meeting, the board approved the fiscal years 2022 to 2025 Transportation Improvement Program, aka TIP, for the region. The TIP is a four-year program of federal and state-funded transportation projects for the NJTPA region. It describes a project phase of work, such as preliminary engineering, final design, right-of-way, or construction, its physical location, funding, schedule, and costs. This work is conducted to carry out the -- This work is conducted to carry out the goals and strategies in NJTPA's LRTP, Plan 2050, in order to be eligible for federal funding. Transportation projects must be programmed for funding in the TIP. Federal funding for the TIP is derived from Federal Highway Administration, or FHWA, and the Federal Transit Administration, FTA, programs. Non-federal funding, state, is derived from the New Jersey Transportation Trust Fund. Obviously, we know that as a TTF. Our Senator fought well for us. I think it's a, something important. It, it brings money all over the state, including here, so it's nice to see that money come back. The Port Authority of New Jersey and New York and New Jersey and other sources, approximately 11.49 billion in investments are programmed over, over the four years of the TIP. In fiscal year 2022, about 1.77 billion is, is programmed for, I'm sorry, highway and bridge projects overseen by the NJDOT and 1.35 billion in project, in projects and programs included NJ Transit. Also, it should be noted that, that momentum is increasing for Amtrak's proposed new New York City to Scranton PA passenger railroad route, which would run through Sussex and Warren Counties over the Lackawanna cutoff and would be greatly benefit the travel and tourism industry of the county and region, especially with the fact that the proposed new rail service would include weekend services. Been talking about this forever too. Again, I think I said it before, I've worked on bridges preparing for this and I would just really like to see that. Write that one. NJDOT Traffic Advisory, Vernon Crossing Road, County Route 644, to close next week for railroad crossing repairs in Vernon. It's really about it. Beginning at 7:00 AM Monday, September 20th until 7:00 PM. Friday, September 24th, Vernon Crossing, again, 644, scheduled to be closed in both directions at the railroad crossing adjacent to Veterans Memorial Park. That's really all we need for that. On a personal note, I think all the commissioners hit Sussex County Day. I was the lucky one who got to volunteer, selling pie, hot dogs, and water for a couple hours anyway, and then I walked around my family. But it was a good day. It was a really good day. A lot of people showed up. It was packed, had some good vendors, some good, good, good things to do. They had some good music going on, so it was nice to see. It was, it was really nice to see, and it was a perfect day.
It was beautiful.
Couldn't have been a better day. As Director said, I'll be attending the Eagle Scout Award October 3rd for Nate Brotman. He's a Frankfurt resident. I actually coached him when he was about eight years old. A great kid when I came up. It's on a Sunday. Not really something I want to do on a Sunday, but when I saw his name, I, I had to do it. So, great kid, looking forward to that. I was able to attend Frankfurt's Township Meeting last Tuesday, and they had the resolution, our voter integrity bill resolution. It passed, which I was happy about. To me, it's, it's a bipartisan resolution. And when I, when I found out, which is important, and I'm not sure if everybody knows this and even everybody in the audience, the new machines that we spent hundreds of thousands on, there's a slot in there that you put your license in and it reads it. So at the meeting, there was a, a poll worker there, old, older gentleman, and he was very happy about this, number one. Number one, that we're, that they passed it. And number two, that they had this already because he has a hard time hearing and seeing and understanding some of the people who come in, because there's some older people. So it's, we're already there. We're already there. So if we have the machines to do it, you should be able to put your license in and, and, and it could read everything. It reads the bar, right? It reads the QR code, whatever it's gonna, and, and your name will come up, your address, everything about you comes up. You need six points of ID to get a license, but yet we don't need an ID to vote. The biggest thing you can do, right, is vote. So anyway, the point of that is I plan on continuing going to my municipalities, which I'm liaison to, and I already spoke to a bunch of them. They're gonna put this on the floor, bring it to vote. I hope you guys can do the same for this. I, it's something I truly believe in. Again, I think it's a bipartisan resolution, and, and there's no reason why Sussex County can't spearhead this throughout the state. Honestly, if it was legal, I would start it here. I would start it here and, and hope everybody picked up on it, but apparently it, that's not. Just to go back to Skyland's.
Ride.
Ride. Yes, I listened to that, that message and, and in the eight months that I've been here, I don't think we've, I've gotten one that was that nice. So that's nice to hear. Once in a while, we do good stuff in Sussex.
Well, you always do things.
We just don't, we just don't get the credit for it. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Commissioner Patillo?
I'm gonna begin with mosquitoes this evening. The rainy weather has caused a tremendous increase in the mosquito population across Sussex County. The Office of Mosquito has received over 500 complaints this past week. They are working weekends and evenings acting on the complaints and have been able to respond to 366 complaints as of Monday. The Office of Mosquito Control urges everyone to protect themselves from mosquitoes and the diseases they carry by wearing EPA, registered insect repellents, and wearing light-colored long-sleeve shirts and long pants. For more information on personal protection or to file a complaint, visit the Sussex County website at www.sussex nj.us/mosquito. I don't know about anyone else, but I was eaten up by mosquitoes the other night. I had to go back home. I was just trying to take a walk and I felt like I was just being attacked. So God bless them. Out of 500 complaints, they already have 300, and what is the number, 366 already handled. There's a congratulations again this week for the Vernon Drug and Alcohol Coalition on their 10th anniversary. If you're not familiar with Drug and Alcohol Coalitions, they offer prevention and education programs to their community. They bring awareness of new trends in addiction, and they work with the Center for Prevention and with the Clear Recovery Program as well. The interesting thing about their celebration was, it was a beautiful dinner and it was held at the Red Tail Lodge in Vernon. The bill for that was picked up by the owner. And at the end of the evening, the owner of Mountain Creek, Joe Hesson, presented a $50,000 check to Becky Carlson for the Center for Prevention. So right after he spoke, the Senator had a speak and he said, Sylvia, what am I gonna say? How am I gonna beat that speech? I said, Steve, the only way you beat that speech is if you have a larger check in your pocket. It was, it was an amazing night and it was nice to see them celebrate for all their accomplishments. So thank you to Vernon.
That's it. Thank you. Commissioner Yardley?
Thank you, Dawn. Just wanted to mention a couple of things. I attended a couple of events on 9/11, 9/11 events, and we, one at the college and one at Wantage, and both were very outstanding in different ways. And the college had a great presentation, very memorable, and the dedication up there of the monument they have. It, it was a very moving time to hear both events where they read off people from the, the community that died and members of Sussex County. Also, I was at the Sparta VFW and they did a ceremony where they read those people that were in the towers or killed by the towers and did not come back. And those are things that you have to go to, sit, and remember, an event that happened 20 years ago. And it was just amazing that people still care. And I think that's a really good thing for our community, that we should never forget that event, tragic event. Just a couple of general notes. We have, the county continues to promote safety and awareness, focusing on our public safety program here in the county. And we now have the installation of the back chairs where they're easily visible and accessible in the event you have to get somebody out of the building that can't walk. And they're in the administration center and in Wheatworth, Wheatworth, I want to call it Road Building, but it's Wheatworth Building. And the other thing that's going on, believe it or not, Fleet is preparing for winter. So they're doing maintenance work and getting, checking on equipment, getting things ready to ensure road-ready vehicles for snow clearance and de-icing. And that is, I guess, I'm gonna say slowly coming upon us because I'm not looking forward to that snow again. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Fasana?
Well, thank you, Director Fantasia, and thank you to all who are joining us this evening. I'll keep my report short this evening, but I did want to start with the exciting news we heard last week, that the Lake Hopacon Commission, in conjunction with the Lake Hopacon Foundation, was awarded a grant in the amount of $480,000 from the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation for Streambank Stabilization Projects in the Upper Musquinacan River Watershed. And these funds, combined with local in-kind matching funds from the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, the Musquinacan Watershed Association, Rutgers University, the New Jersey Highlands Council, Princeton Hydro, the Lake Hopacon Historical Museum, the three surrounding municipalities there near the Lake Hopacon area, and both Morris and Sussex Counties, have resulted in nearly $1 million to address three priority streambank stabilization projects within the upper Musquinacan River, River Watershed in Hopacon, in Roxbury, and in Mount Arlington. So I know that's a huge deal for our area, and I just wanted to say congratulations and well done to all those involved. Sylvia touched a little bit on the pretty significant amount of complaints that we've been getting in Sussex County regarding mosquitoes. And on tonight's agenda, you will find a change order calling for a 75% increase in the county's agreement regarding mosquito spraying from the Office of Mosquito Control. And this is due to that unforeseen increase in both mosquito activity and the detection of mosquito-borne diseases here in Sussex County. This increase in services will be aimed at treating the affected areas and eradicating the problem and the risk of disease in those affected areas. And finally, I wanted to remind our residents that for the latest news and information regarding COVID-19 in Sussex County, such as activity reports, at-home testing, how and where to get vaccinated, and many other resources, please visit sussex nj.us/covid19. And a reminder for our local businesses, that just recently Sussex County has announced that we are requesting small businesses to please complete our survey aimed at helping us understand the pandemic's impact on your specific business and what type of assistance is needed most urgently. The feedback from our business community is greatly, greatly appreciated, and it will help us a lot with recovery planning for the next few months ahead. And the survey itself is designed to be quick and easy. So if you yourself are a business owner, or if you know one, if you can help share the word that you can find our survey right on our county website homepage at sussex nj.us. And with that, Director, that concludes my report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, to start off on the theme of the celebrations, we had so many proclamations this evening. Sussex County Day was fantastic. A big compliment to Tammy Horstfield and the Chamber for them to, you know, organize that event. It's a daunting task. There were hundreds upon hundreds and hundreds of people that came. And again, the weather cooperated, but, but the vendors and, you know, all the different organizations across the county were really well represented there. What a great day. I mean, they did a fabulous job putting that together, so that's a big compliment to, to Tammy and her, and her team there. Also, I was able to attend a couple of events on 9/11. Sylvia and I actually attended the Franklin Borough 9/11 Remembrance, and they've done it, you know, as a bit of a tradition. There were first responders from all over the county that actually came. And the Franklin Band played. You had, you know, different members of the clergy, interfaith individuals were there. And they also scrolled the names of everyone lost and they finished with a light show with beams that, that went all the way up into the heavens, you know, in the evening. It was beautiful and it was moving and it was appropriate. And we appreciate Franklin Borough for doing that. I was very proud of my, my town. Also, I was able to, along with Mr. Carney and Sheriff Strata, we attended the Moving Wall in, at Woodbourne Park, and that was just amazing. I've seen the actual, the actual version right online, but this, of course, is the half-size replica that travels, you know, originated in Texas and absolutely amazing. They did a ceremony that afternoon as well. They had a skydiver that came out with the American flag. And to be able to go, they had it set up where you'd walk, I don't know, kind of like a loop around. And they had volunteers there that would give you the exact location in an app where you could find your loved one. My cousin, who passed away before I was even born, he died in combat in Vietnam. I was able, on behalf of my mother, to say, can I, you know, find him? They told me exactly where it was. They had things to give you an etching for the wall, which was amazing. And I got to bring that, you know, to my family. And they have a really nice website that accompanies that with the, with the app. But I mean, what a beautiful setup. And, and just thank you so much to the VFW there. The work that they did there was amazing. To have something on that national scale, come to Sussex County specifically on the anniversary, the 20th anniversary of 9/11, I just thought was just amazing. It was amazing. It was beautiful. So just want to thank them. Also, a couple upcoming days, we have Hardeston Day on this Saturday down at Wheatworth. They always do a great job there. I actually met a couple of days ago with the mayor of Hardeston and one of their council members, and they were actually asking me about the business surveys for the community for COVID relief and American Rescue Plan funding. So I met with them. They're one of my towns for liaison. So we had a nice conversation about that and I gave them a little bit of basis, things that we've shared here, some of the priorities of what we would like to do here with those funds. Also, there is another day that's coming up. Let me see here, on Saturday, October 9th, Stillwater has its 15th Annual Fall Festival. And they are actually honoring their longtime mayor, Lisa Chamings, as well. So Herb, I'll let you give the full report on that one at the next meeting because that's your stomping grounds. So I won't steal your thunder, but I just wanted to throw it out there when I'm trying to organize how many things I'm gonna go to and the types of food I'm going to eat and all of these things as I eat my way across the county. Another thing I wanted to bring to your attention, in, in the state of New Jersey, there is the Legislative Disability Caucus. And they're four members, Senator Tom Kane, Assemblywoman Ora Dunn, Assemblyman Anthony Varelli, and Assemblyman Andrew Zwicker. And on Tuesday, September 28th, they're gonna be holding a virtual Zoom session with topics that include barriers to special services, caregiver stress, and transition of those with disabilities into adulthood. So I think that that, that's a new, new mode that, you know, to reach out to the public. I think that's really important. It's sponsored by the Caring Partners of Morrison-Sussex Families, and Tri-County CMO are working together to sponsor that with the legislators. So again, Tuesday, September 28th, from 7:00 to 8:00 PM via Zoom. And I'm gonna ask that this flyer please be placed on our website and also on social media, because I think it's important. Now to get a little bit to the Health Department and where we are, this is kind of a conglomeration. It's been a while since we really dug into some of this data beyond just the basic numbers. Carol is always wonderful in, in providing me the most up-to-date, to-the-minute information. So we usually have a chat in the afternoon right before, so I get, get the most updated numbers before our meetings. So again, so you are aware, we are now at, I think, hospitalizations. I would like to share that because that's a big topic to know where we are at. So from September 1st to present, we have 24 in total hospitalizations. Almost all were unvaccinated. So again, we've started a bit of a, you know, public information campaign about the choices that you have. And if you should choose to become vaccinated, I actually met Carol at, at the radio station, and I know Anthony had gone as well, to basically say this is what's available to you should you choose to do so, and that the vaccine may help prevent severe illness and hospitalizations due to the coronavirus. So we do want that information there. Currently, there's nine outbreaks in the county. We have two in our acute care facilities, and that's what I wanted to touch on a little bit, because as you are aware, you know, big concern was what happened to our residents in those long-term care facilities. And on our reports online, you'll see that you want to see a lot of gray on the facilities report, because the gray means it's been 30 days or more since an outbreak has, you know, has ended. There's been no cases reported. And at the start of the pandemic, we had nothing but white, and we were just praying for a strip of gray. And tonight, we have a, a lot of gray on here, and we have two facilities that do have current outbreaks, and that's Barn Hill and UMC Bristol Blen have, have outbreaks. But as far as the other facilities, there are no outbreaks. But to give you a little bit of context, in our long-term care facilities in the county, there've been a total of 787 residents that have contracted COVID. Now of that, 365 were staff members and three- of that, 365 were staff members, and three deaths were attributed to those to those those numbers of 365. However, in stark contrast, 422 residents contracted COVID in our long-term care facilities with 131 fatalities, which is over 30% of those who contracted in long-term care facilities. But again, we are glad to see that the outbreaks in those facilities are definitely, definitely lower. So our current numbers right now in Sussex County, there's been a total of 16,229 confirmed cases. And we know we have about 143,000 people in the county right now. So we have no new deaths reported in that that monthly report, which is promising. We have had a total of 318 deaths in the county overall. The mayor's call, we used to do those a lot more frequently. There was a mayor's call actually that did take place. And, you know, the mayors, definitely, they have a lot of questions for Lama Shaddad, our health representative. And she shared a fair amount of information about, well, why are we seeing more outbreaks? What are the ages of the individuals? You know, what are we seeing for trends? And obviously, since schools are open, it's interesting to see, you know, the shift in the older population, the younger population, how COVID is affecting students versus seniors. Just for a few basic statistics across the county for percentages and age groups where we're at, the female-to-male ratio is about even. Female were just shy of 8,000, males 7,734. So we're within a couple hundred. So gender doesn't seem to play as much of a role. But as far as cases across the county, in the 0-4 age group, that makes up 2.5% of our cases, 5-9 is 3%, 10-14 is 4.5%. And as we go up, you see the numbers increase. 15-19-year-olds represent 8% of the total cases in the county. 20-24, 9. 25-34, 15%. 35-44, 13%. 45-54, apparently, they're the the most impacted with 16% of the cases in the county. That's the largest percentage is ages 45 to 54. And then it does just dwindle down from there. So we're starting to see more of a evening outspread with some younger younger people contracting COVID versus it was completely upside down when COVID first broke out broke out in the county. And again, I just want to note, again, this board has zero control over what happens in schools, directives, executive orders, or Health Department or whatnot. But so you are aware, effective October 18th, every school in the state of New Jersey, if an individual is not vaccinated, they must be tested once or twice per week for COVID. That cost is covered. There was so much confusion from the start of the governor's first order of that, saying that they were expecting school districts to absorb those costs, which then would have a taxpayer impact. And the reasoning was, well, the federal government has provided money to schools. Well, that got a severe pushback, saying that it was an unfunded mandate again, especially with all school funding being cut. So the governor backtracked on that and said that if schools submitted by X amount of time, they would be able to be reimbursed. Or there's certain agencies that are billing the state directly for testing the employees, you know, for COVID. So again, beginning October 18th, any individual who's not fully vaccinated must start testing. It'll be paid for by the state, which was a great pushback and a great win, again, for for school districts to know that that wasn't an unfunded mandate. And it was also a great pushback that the state actually recognized the fact that individuals do have a choice, and it was not something that was mandated where people in schools were losing, you know, losing their jobs. It's a great, great, I think, step for medical freedom. And also, New Jersey continues to recognize religious exemptions and medical exemptions from the vaccine. So again, I'm a huge proponent of medical choice. I myself am vaccinated, and I'm vaccinated because it was my choice. And I like to see when this is followed through at the state level. And that's my report for tonight. So next, we move on to number 10, the Approval of Consent Agenda. We have Resolutions A A through K. The Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex has reviewed the consent agenda consisting of various proposed resolutions and determined that adoption of the said resolutions is in and will further the public interest. If any commissioner would like to remove an item to be considered separately, please do so now. Okay, I need a motion to adopt the Consent Agenda, A through K.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. Number 11, Approval of Minutes for the Regular Meeting of September 8th, 2021, and the Executive Session Minutes of September 8th, 2021.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, I would just like to discuss that I was at the meeting, I was at the executive meeting. I did have to step out at 9:00 p.m. for a work-related issue. I have reviewed the minutes, though, of the very short period of time after I left, so I will be voting on the minutes for the executive session. Okay, so all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Pass. Number 12, Appointments and/or Resignations, there are none. Number 13, Resolutions A through F. And again, if I can refer you back to when we had first started, we did make a note that Resolution 13A regarding authorization to provide for the purchase of CityWorks Asset Management software and Resolution 13F regarding medical marijuana are still under legal review. So we are approving this, removing A and F.
Need a motion?
Motion. And a second?
Second.
Okay, Terry, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Posano?
Yes.
Director Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Patillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Number 14, Awards of Contract Change Orders Bid. We have A through D. The Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex has reviewed the Award of Contract Change Orders bids consisting of various proposed resolutions and determined that adoption of the said resolutions is in and will further the public interest. I need a motion to adopt Resolutions A through D.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion? Terry, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Posano?
Yes.
Director Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Patillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Number 15, Financial, a resolution for payment of the bills list, September 23rd, 2021. I need a motion to pay the bills.
Still moved.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Posano?
Yes.
Director Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Patillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Number 16, There Is No Personnel Agenda this evening, so we'll move to number 17, which is our administrative report from Mr. Paul.
Thank you, Director. Just a few things. The county library system has announced that all locations are now open two evenings a week until 8:00 p.m. For more information about their after-hours, their grab-and-go scheduling, e-resources, and additional information, you can either visit sussexcountylibrary.org or call the main library at 973-948-3660. The Division of Senior Services is sponsoring a Caregiver Expo, which will provide caregivers the opportunity to learn about the many resources available in the county to support them as they strive to enable seniors to remain as independent as possible in their homes and communities. The event is scheduled to take place on Thursday, October 21st, and registration for the event can be done by contacting the Division of Senior Services at 973-579-0555. Also, just a reminder that at-home COVID-19 tests are still available at no cost from the county. The county having partnered with LabCorp and Vault Health to offer free COVID-19 at-home tests for all county residents. And more information is available about that at-home testing at the county's website at sussex nj.us. And then last but not least is the announcement by the New Jersey Department of Transportation of a Virtual Public Information Center, which is scheduled to take place from September 27th through October 10th. And this is concerning Route 206 and the bridge over the branch of the Pequest River in Andover Borough. Now, I will tell you is that most people don't realize that there actually is a bridge over the Pequest River in Andover Borough. This is the tunnel that you go through as you're leaving Byram going into Andover Borough. Below that tunnel is a bridge over the Pequest. And so it is that bridge that lies underneath the tunnel. It's actually currently the way that it's structured. It's it's currently a single structure. This Public Information Center is talking about how the Department of Transportation anticipates the replacement of that bridge. What is of most significant note for Sussex County residents is that a detour of Route 206 will be required for this bridge replacement and tunnel rehabilitation. And that closure of Route 206 is anticipated to last up to 18 months. And so there are proposed detours through Byram and Andover to route traffic around what will be that closure. And so it's extremely important that people take the opportunity to go and visit this Public Information Center to be able to see what the proposed plans are, what the impacts are going to be, ask questions, and have those questions answered. We will be posting the details about how to access this Virtual Public Information Center on the county's website. But it is a very significant project that that will have an extreme impact on traffic circulation through Sussex County. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Might I add to that, that the initial email that had come in to us, the gentleman from the state, I don't know where he was getting his information, but we didn't receive it the first round. But somewhere out in the ether, George Graham and some of our predecessors actually were on that list to receive it. We only received it directly because Byram Township actually jumped on it and sent it to us immediately. And then I actually responded to the gentleman from the state because he did not include us in the links to even see how to access this. So thank you, Greg, for bringing that that up tonight because this is this is a big one, and I think input is going to be very, very important. But I was just a little irritated how it came to us and, you know, being so significant that it was not even accurate.
I just got a quick question, too. Greg, I don't know if you could add it. So that 206 right there goes under the Lackawanna Cut. They're not touching the railroad bridge there? Right? That stays. They're just worried about the culvert underneath?
It's the rehabilitation of the tunnel and then the replacement of the bridge.
Underneath?
Yes.
But it's supposed to begin in 2026, correct?
I think it's all subject to funding. It's possible, but that that is still to be determined.
And this kind of goes hand in hand with what I read before with the the opening up of the railroad.
Is it under all tractor trailers? Does everything go through Andover and Byram?
Yeah. Wow. Thanks for the input.
Thank you. Next county council report?
I do not have a report tonight, Director.
Thank you. Unfinished business, number 19. I just want to comment a bit on the medical marijuana resolution. Actually, Katie and I are in communication back and forth with one another regarding the particulars of that. So we'll be sending the most updated version to you for your review in cooperation with Mr. Steinhardt. Any commissioner have any other unfinished business?
I do, Director. Maybe I should have read it before, but I just got an email now. This is regards to the investigation with the LTC facilities in the state. This woman I met a while ago, I was talking to her. She's a little nervous to come in and speak her mind. Her father was one of the first deaths, if not the first death to die at the Andover Subacute. So she she emailed me. So if you don't mind, I would like to just read what she emailed me. This is, again, this will be on the ballot in November. I believe, again, this is a bipartisan vote, and it doesn't matter what affiliation you are, what color you are. This is something that, as commissioners, that we owe our county. So I'll read what she wrote. This is the first time I read it, so bear with me. And I can't see it very well either. All right. My father's name was Thomas Ferendo, and he was a resident of Andover Subacute from November 2019 to April 2020. April 2020. My father passed away from COVID on April 17, 2020. My father was a United States veteran. He served two tours of Vietnam War while in the Air Force. He was a loving and nurturing father and grandfather. His death was not only tragic tragic but preventable. It is not acceptable to me or my family that my father suffered a horrible death by literally drowning in his own secretions when it was possible it could have been prevented. It is now a known fact that the nursing home did not provide adequate personnel protection equipment to the staff to the staff to stop the spread of COVID to the residents and staff members themselves. I was fortunate enough to have been able to visit my father in a hospital a few days prior to his death. It was like nothing I've ever seen. He was gasping for air, and it was nothing myself or the nurses and doctors could do. It is sickening to think that this did not have to happen. My brother, who resides in Colorado, was not lucky enough to see my father prior to his death. He can only tell me he loved by phone held by my father's nurse to his ear. The fact that I work in healthcare myself and also have dealt with COVID on a daily basis since the beginning only angers me more as I know how effective PPE is in stopping the spread of COVID. And had Andover only followed the guidelines by CDC, many residents, including my father, would not have had to suffer and eventually die alone. Thank you. And heal big. Just a side note, when I did speak to her, she is very happy with the referendum and thinks we, again, need to to provide the service and investigate what's going on with this. We need answers. She wants answers. This is a person who went through this, and it needs to be done. And it's something I personally believe in myself. So, thank you. I guess I should have brought that up before.
Thank you. You said that she said Andover Subacute did not follow the CDC guidance? That's what this is about. Our governor did not follow CDC guidance. Our New Jersey State Health Department did not follow CDC guidance by ordering infected patients, untested patients, into those facilities. This is twofold. Unbelievable. Thank you for sharing that. Any other unfinished business? Number 20, New Business. Number 21, Public Session from the Floor. This public session is for those wishing to make general comments of three minutes or less on non-agenda topics. Please line up at the microphone and maintain six feet social distance with other attendees. State your name and municipality for the record. Now, again, I'd like to state, this is for non-agenda items. However, we had some late arrivals that missed the first. So if you choose to use your time for agenda items, I will allow that. So I need a motion to open the floor for public comment.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Floor is open for public comment.
Good evening. Kenneth Collins from Andover Township. I was going to ask you about the Compassionate Care Resolution proposal that I brought to you, but it's refreshing to hear that you're moving forward with that. So I'll just wait for the next meeting and see what comes up. I'm here to ask for you to have later start times for these meetings so that more people in our community can attend. People have a lot of trouble getting here by 6:00 to these meetings. It's an early start time. I know you guys have to get somewhere tomorrow morning, probably, to get to work or whatever, but the public is being left out. And more to address that, I'm here to urge you to always have a live stream of this event, so of these meetings, so that people can so, of these meetings, so that people can at least listen to them and hear what's going on here. If you can't figure out how to do a Zoom thing for everybody every time you have a meeting, I don't think that's too much to ask, and I think that's, by not doing these things, you are actively excluding the public from being involved in county governance. And I really wish you would stop excluding the public. It seems like you're doing it on purpose. I'm also here to ask about the questions that I submitted about the compressor station project that have not been answered by anyone. I was here at the last meeting, I asked that all of the questions that everybody submitted be put up on the county website with the answers that I would imagine the company did not provide most of the answers for most of those questions that the community deserves answers to. So, the community, I'm here to ask you, for our community, to please put all of the questions that were submitted by members of our community about the compressor station expansion on your website. And if they answered them, put the answers. If they didn't answer them, then put down that they didn't answer them. And then you can actually see that they didn't, probably did not answer most of the questions that were posed by our community. I can tell you, none of my questions were answered, not one. And I emailed all of you so that you'd be aware of that. I hope that you can provide me with answers to the questions that I submitted. And if you can't, and the pipeline company can't, then make sure they do not do this compressor station expansion. We deserve answers. The community deserves answers. We took time out of our lives to submit important pertinent questions, and they're just being ignored. Thank you.
Could you say something to that? Mr. Collins, I'm going to take a little bit of blame in that because I did answer you, and I didn't follow through with that. I honestly forgot about you, just being honest. I was very, very busy. But that's something I'll look into for you. I'll deal with Terry, and, you know, we'll do the best we can to get those answers, and if they're not going to give them to us, I mean, I can't force them to do it, you know what I mean? But that's on me. I take blame for that because I did answer you, and I never got back to you. So I apologize for that, but I'll work with Terry tomorrow on that.
Good evening. My name is Zoe Heath. I live in Vernon Township. Again, I just want to ask the commissioner board to offer a hybrid option to attend these meetings, or at the very least, a live stream. On my way here, due to the storm, there were lights out, traffic lights out on 517 and 94, and it would have been a lot easier for me to just stay home and watch the meeting, and safer for a lot of people. I know personally, right now, there's at least two people I know personally who would like to be at these meetings, but cannot because of their medical issues. But they'd want to participate, and they can't because there's no access at home. I know you record the meetings and put them on YouTube, that's great, but the sound quality is low. Just for example, at this meeting, excuse me, Administrator Paul answered questions from the audience, but your microphone's up here, definitely didn't pick that up, and nobody at home is going to be able to hear his answers. So please consider, at the very least, live streaming your meetings. Vernon schools have been doing it since before the pandemic. The pandemic proved that every municipality and governing board can do this, they just won't. So please consider a hybrid option, and at the very least, live streaming. Thank you.
Almir Osmanovic Hamburg. So I've been missing from these meetings for obvious reasons.
Sir, I'm sorry. Could you repeat your name?
Almir Osmanovic.
Okay, thank you.
Hamburg.
Thank you. I will hold you up on that one.
No issues. I know you have issues with my name, but that's okay. Everybody does.
No, I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's okay. Thank you for this opportunity. I just want to mention one thing, since everybody here has failed to do so. We just surpassed 700,000 deaths from COVID a couple of days ago. That's a year and two months of this pandemic. And some states, not really New Jersey, but some southern states are even worse today than they were before. My wife has PTSD from working in the ICU for a year and a half, wheeling down people, dead bodies into the morgue. And now, quite honestly, I'm trying to get her to get some counseling. That's provided rough, because she's still dealing with COVID patients. A couple of days ago, there was one woman in the ICU, she was coughing on her own purpose, saying this whole thing is a hoax. Unfortunately, my wife ended up intubating her and three days later, wheeling her body to the morgue. So that's an issue. I understand we all love our nurses and doctors until we need to talk about the burnout and quote-unquote "medical freedom." I have a personal story. I hate anecdotal evidence, but I'll just do it anyway. Back when I was in refugee camp in 1992, when we left Bosnia, really quick, my mom forgot to take my vaccination record. And the Red Cross was there, vaccinating people.
One minute.
And my mom just basically said, "I don't remember what you got, so you're going to get everything again." I was like, "God damn it, I'm 11 years old, I hate needles, but guess what? I got everything again." Fast forward, when I joined the military, down in Fort Benning, went through something called the Cow Line, where there's medics on both sides, and you don't ask questions, you just take whatever they give you, right? You refuse, you get counseled, you refuse again, you get counseled, you refuse again, you literally get thrown out of the military. In my civilian world, when I went to Tunisia, I had to get vaccinated for a lot of other things that we don't have here that they have in Tunisia. So guess what? For me to support that project, I had to get vaccinated, no questions asked. I don't understand why, in this country, where we have millions and millions of dosages, they're sitting on stuff. I understand, just let me make this one quick point, there's nobody behind me.
I'm trying to get the director to give you an extended time.
Okay.
Finish your sentence.
That people are going on Facebook and literally posting fake news. Not only that, but I was on Reddit, of all places, yesterday, and there's a sub called Herman Cain Award. Please check.
I'm sorry, sir. Sir, you're totally going on another.
No, 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 no. This is relevant.
No, 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 yes, no.
This is relevant, because anti-vaxxers go on there.
I appreciate that, sir.
Anti-vaxxers go on there.
I wanted to be respectful to you, to give you your time.
No, 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 that's fine, that's fine. But three minutes, I haven't been here, you don't allow this to be a hybrid option.
No, there were three minutes, sir.
No, no, I get that. But this is important.
I'm not saying it's not important at all.
No, no, you are. You literally are. The second you leave this meeting, the second you leave this meeting, you push these conspiracies as well.
Sir, thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Absurd.
Okay, seeing no one else come forward, I'll make a motion to close the floor for public comment.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, closed. Floor is closed. Any commissioner wish to comment? I would like to make one comment to Mr. Collins. I work outside the county. It would not break my heart for a later start time for one second. It would not break my heart at all, and I would love that piece. The issue is, for me, we're working a lot of times with professionals that come from the county, who have worked all day, and then their hours get pushed until later. So again, if I made the decision for my own schedule, I would love it. Again, it's something that we've discussed, you know. I personally am not opposed to it. It works much better in my schedule if there was a later start, so you don't have pushback in that. It's basically trying to get all of our professionals and everybody that comes in as part of this, you know, to agree to something like that. So it's certainly a topic for discussion that I'm not against. All right. Next is number 22. Reminders, again, as Commissioner Posano said, please check the county's website, www.sussex nj.us for meeting schedules. We received quite a list of information from Department of Health and Human Services for a variety of clinics and for children, for women, for COVID, for flu. There are so many that are coming up with really great flyers. We're going to be pushing all of that out on our social media. I would like to also get some of those things that aren't necessarily just COVID-related on radio, to basically get the message out for mammogram screening for general vaccinations for children, just for some of the different health clinics that we offer. I think we need to do a bit of a better job getting it out beyond, you know, our normal, our norm. And now, again, with American Rescue Plan funds coming, our ability to improve our communication for all of the services the county does offer, you know, is going to be easier as a priority from a fiscal standpoint. So thank you again for sharing that with us. That was quite impressive, some of the media that came through, to be able to be shared. So I look forward to putting that out. Number 23 is executive session. It's a resolution providing for an executive closed session not open to the public in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 10:4-12. Whereas the subject matters about to be discussed may be excluded from the public portion of the meeting by resolution of Board of County Commissioners as an exception to the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to NJSA 10:4-12B, and whereas it appears necessary for the Board of County Commissioners to discuss such matters in executive session, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex, in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 10:4-12B and NJSA 10:4-13 at the Board at this time, enter into an executive session from which the public shall be excluded, and be it further resolved that the general nature of the subjects to be discussed relate to the following items authorized by NJSA 10:4-12B as designated below. Number seven, matters relating to litigation, negotiations, and the attorney-client privilege, acquisition of property, attorney-client privilege communication. And number eight, matters relating to employment relationship, Department of Health and Human Services. Be it further resolved that the deliberations conducted in the closed session may be disclosed to the public upon the determination of the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners or provided by law that the public interest will no longer be served by such confidentiality. And be it further resolved that upon completion of the business for which the Board has entered into executive session, the Board shall reconvene. Oh, will we reconvene and resume the meeting, or will we not reconvene? An open session, that is? Yes, we are reconvening in open session, and action may be taken. Yes. Okay, so the Board expects to take formal action after returning from executive session. And so therefore, just the motion to enter executive session.
Still moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, and again, normally when we do say we will take action following executive session, we're supposed to give a bit of a timeframe or expectation. So Katie, what is your expectation for executive session length? 30 minutes?
I would say no more than 30 minutes.
30 minutes, so roughly 30 minutes is the expectation. Okay. Thank you. Thank you to everybody. If you choose to stay, feel free to stay. If not, please have a safe trip home, but we're adjouring into executive. Thank you. The time is...
8:32.
8:34.
8:34, thank you, I'm sorry. The Board of County Commissioners have just returned from executive session. They are returning now. There will be no action taken. Therefore, we are proceeding for a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Commissioner Carney, second?
Second.
Commissioner Posano, roll call vote, all in the favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Terry, good night.